So we are going to get started now with Council Resolution 89 2020. And joining us to discuss Council Resolution 89 2020, the general plan guidelines are Amy Gowan, Mary Kendall, Erin Talkington, and Matt Nooncaster. And I understand that a PowerPoint has been prepared for this meeting. And I don't know if you wanted to start off by showing the PowerPoint or if the council preferred to start off with asking questions. Is there a... No preference, okay? Who is going to show the PowerPoint?
So can the council hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So Matt Nooncaster from City Explained is our lead consultant on the general plan update. He's prepared to present PowerPoint on the guidelines. And joining us around 1:30 will be Erin Talkington. She works for RCLCO, and they're going to be doing the market and economic analysis. And some of the comments that came up at the public hearing were around the timing of that. So we invited Erin to help answer any questions on the market piece should that arise. And so I see Matt just...
You do see Matt?
The boxes.
There you are, Matt.
Hello, thank you all for having me. I'm just trying to share my screen, and then we should be good. Let's see.
Well, do you want to start while you're doing that, talking a little bit about your company and what you do and your conversations that you've had here in Hoco?
Sure, of course. So as was mentioned, my name is Matt Nooncaster, and I'm the owner of City Explained Incorporated. We're a firm that's located in Charlotte, North Carolina, although we have employees throughout the Mountain West as well as the DC area and the like. We've been working, myself, I've been working for about 23 years or so, and I've worked at a couple of large engineering firms and the like. And I'd actually owned another small firm before this one and just really liked being able to kind of control my projects and really deliver exactly what I felt the clients needed. So I went back on my own, and this firm's been around since late 2015. And we write comprehensive plans all over the country, from Maine to the big island of Hawaii, and from North Dakota all the way to Florida and everywhere in between. And the way we like to build these things is partnerships. And so we get really excited when we find a staff and a community with the level of sophistication like Howard County has because we think really great things can happen. And so it's been a great experience so far. We were able to make it in, I believe it was April of 2020, and I'm sorry, in March of 2020. And then, you know, we kind of got an unexpected curveball. But I did appreciate my time, being able to meet many of you on this call and this meeting already, and we look forward to working together.
Thank you, Matt. I'm going to stop you for just a second before you share your screen because I overlooked calling roll call for the council members who are on the call with us. So I'm going to do that, and then we'll come back to you, okay? All right. Kristiana Rigby?
Here.
David Youngman?
Here.
Opal Jones?
Here.
And Liz Walsh?
Here.
All right. We're all here. All right, back to you, Matt.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And as was mentioned, I was going to just use a slide presentation to kind of organize our thoughts, make sure we get some information out there for the discussion. We'd love any feedback you have or any questions you have as well. And so as Amy also mentioned during the opening, I will be joined at sub 1:00, hopefully around 1:30, by Erin Talkington with RCLCO if you have questions on anything market-related as well. So with that, I'll quickly go through the presentation. And let's see, the slide's changing for you. Do you see a...
It's not changing yet, but we do see the front slide.
Okay. Let me see here, because I am clicking on my slides, but I'm not seeing them move on the screen there.
Well, we have some excellent IT people here who I know will be able to help. As Greg starts laughing, how dare you laugh? We know how great you are.
Fantastic. I'm using Microsoft PowerPoint, and I just did a share screen with, and designated which screen to share.
Okay. So if you hit your spacebar or you can use your right arrow?
Okay. I'm doing that, but I'm still, and it's changing on my screen, but I don't see it changing in the gallery view.
So Greg, if need be, we can have him. I have it too, and I can share it.
Let me just see. Let somebody in our room here share that, if that's okay? Can we move forward?
That would be great. Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, I should remind people who are watching that we actually have, oddly enough, two CR89s on the agenda today. This CR89 is the general guideline plan, and the other CR89 is from 2019. And that is the Dorsey overlook sale. So we will be doing, weirdly enough, two CR89s today, in case anybody is confused and wondering why we're doing that. So are we ready to go?
As soon as I...
We're almost ready. We're getting there.
Yep, I got it.
We got it. Okay, so you can just tell our council administrator, Ms. Schwartz-Jones, to move ahead when you're ready to go to the next slide.
Okay, that's fantastic. And yeah, because I'm getting a little bit of lag on my end, so I'm just going to tell you when to advance the slide, and I may just confirm which slide we're on maybe halfway through or something to make sure we're all in good unison here, if that's okay.
That's perfect.
Fantastic, thank you. So if you could go to the first slide, you'll see just kind of a, you know, what are we going to talk about today? What is our focus? And right now, we are talking about the general guidelines, and those are the framework for how we want to move forward. And it's interesting because this is a time where, I mentioned in the opening, I work around the country. This is one of the very few places that actually go through the formality of having guidelines before you start your process, but I see a lot of value in them, kind of just getting things out on the table and really talking about stuff, and I think it's fantastic. And so to that end, though, what these are is a background. So we're not advocating for themes or a vision or anything at this point in time. They're a background for a framework for how we want to do our data, collect our data, do our analysis, do our engagement, and those kind of things. I'll remind you that the guidelines that were presented to you to review were unanimously approved by the planning board on May 7. And again, you see the third bullet in the slide. We want to throw a couple more new pieces of information because, as you can imagine, in some ways, May 7 is like an eternity ago, right? With the way some things are changing right now. And so we wanted to provide some additional explanation, information for some things that we've heard about, either through the public testimony or something of that nature. So, next slide. As part of those additional items that we'll be talking about, we have three of them plus any others that you want to bring up for discussion. The first one is looking at how we do effective community engagement within the world of COVID-19, understanding that this is a process that's building all the way till the end of 2021. So how do we be flexible and how do we plan even in the unknown in some ways? Item number two is, well, how do you collect data and what do you do with it, given the context of the current COVID-19 behaviors and conditions that we're seeing in this air quote, return to normalcy that people talk about at some point in the future? And then item number three, clarify how maybe different committees and things that I'll highlight during our engagement process, how they all fit together, and how it's not a very vertical hierarchy, but more of a horizontal arrangement for how all these folks work together and have influence over the planning process. So next slide. I will start with some background and context for the guidelines, kind of how we got here. And if you go to the next slide, you see this is a direct capture out of the Howard County Code. And really, when we were talking with the planning board, we were talking about item number one, the preparation of the guidelines. Now that we're speaking with you about this, we're on to sub paragraph number two, the adoption of the guidelines. And you see that ultimately, county council will adopt the guidelines by resolution prior to being able to really formulate the general plan, because the guidelines can be formed and guide us as we go forward. And so this is a really big moment in the planning process because we want to make sure we have good confidence and a good place where the compass is pointing so we can really start in earnest on the general plan efforts. Next slide. Now, we didn't just start from scratch on these general guidelines, and although we're not from the local area, a lot of our teammates are, and so we kind of almost interviewed ourselves and our consulting team to kind of start to get the lay of the land. We also just tried to get our hands on as much as we could in terms of information and content that had been prepared, knowing that we're going to be doing a whole lot of this ourselves once the general plan really kicks off with adoption of the guidelines. As you can see, you have a very long history in terms of planning and really thinking about yourselves critically and into the future. And so there was over 75 plans that we volunteered to us that we should really look at and thumb through and just get more acquainted with. There also was then a series of stakeholder interviews and some engagement exercises that had occurred prior kind of to our arrival or as we were getting onboard. Those started as early as August 2019, where DPZ staff had interviewed in a planning board workshop, as well as county council members and a whole host of interest groups in the county to get some of their input on what was important from a process standpoint. And then again, we had come in March of 2020 and partnered with DPZ staff to meet with many of the county council members, as well as the county executive and the technical advisory team while we were there, again, just starting to kind of get some information flowing in both directions. Then ultimately, in April 9 of 2020, we had a workshop with the planning board, and then again, we had their official action take place on May 7 of 2020. And then also, because you all were doing, you know, some development regulation assessments, thinking about zoning in the future, we were able to tap into that because it was great information, it was in-depth and fresh. And so we took advantage of all the public meetings that had already been had and the 500 folks who had already commented in the form of 700 comments that we got to go through. And we got to do all that and also combine some of our experience in writing comprehensive plans, and that's how the guidelines sort of formed. And again, this is one of those points to just reiterate again, that these guidelines are kind of the plan to plan, rather than any policies or things we're already moving forward. There's such a great investment in community engagement, as well as data inventory analysis and scenario planning and the things I'm going to go about, that this framework is really just to provide the guidelines so that we can make sure we do the right process. Next slide. So with that, you see that there's some general highlights for the document. I don't want to read the document to you, but I do want to highlight some of the things that are in there, again, either for questions or further discussion. And so you go to the next slide, you see the first thing here is the general plan facts and limitations. And again, we just thought it was important to be right up front and define kind of what we were doing and maybe under the limitations, what we were not doing as a general plan, and how this fits into all the other plans that are being done. And also acknowledging that what you do as a government is very important for shaping the future, but there are other focuses of planning as well. And so we like to honor those and mention those as we go forward in our planning process. Next slide. We've also kind of diagrammed out the planning process, and again, there's a lot of work to be done, so we try to kind of put it in compartments so that we can track progress and make sure we celebrate successes. And so you see for this project, we put it into five different planning cycles. And the first one kind of starts now, and we've been doing it, hitting our feet underneath us, all the way to writing the document. And I'll go through some of these in more depth here in the next few slides. So, next slide, you should see Planning Phase 1. Planning Phase 1 started as soon as the contract was signed. It was exchanging data back and forth. It was, again, our visit up to the area where we got to take a planning tour. We got to start to meet with some folks while we were in town. I mean, all this stuff is part of what we're calling discovery. We're just trying to figure things out, get the lay of the land so that we can write the general guidelines. That is the main deliverable of Phase 1 are the guidelines that we're talking about today. Also running the background is a project branding exercise that went on, and you saw the new Hoco by Design logo that we're moving forward. And also a messaging plan. So we want both county staff, as well as the consulting team, to be all in the same page to kind of hide and message things for the plan, and then to have a plan in place for that to be done. So that's also going to be done in Phase 1. Next slide. So then Phase 2 starts shortly after the general guidelines have been adopted, which then gives us the confidence to move forward on really getting a lot of data and analysis done and some collection done and starting to look at what's going on in the world of Howard County. And you see as part of that, this is where we're just going to immerse ourselves as much data as we can. We want to look at inferences for that data. We want to be able to talk to folks about what the data means to them. But you see, we've got several things going on here. One is looking formally at those 75 plans and starting to pull things out and writing that we need to be thinking about or that may need to change in one way or another, either in the general plan or implementing plans. We'll be looking at all the demographics that are going on within the county and the region. We're also just starting to kick off from a coordination standpoint, getting our team members ready to do what we call physical assessments. And those assessments are really just starting again to look at the different layers of the county. And while you see listed, there's like agriculture, the environment, land use, transportation, community character, and then supporting infrastructure, which is everything else. I would want to point out that while we have folks who are doing that as part of our process, we share our information, our findings back and forth because we really think that there are more cross-cutting topics where a transportation and a land use or a housing and a land use, there's actually synergies between these. And so we're really trying to force the fact that we're going to be looking at everything holistically. Ultimately, the kind of defining moment for Phase 2 is when we actually get real planning themes that can be defined and shared with the community as the things that we want to address or consider or really take advantage of in the general plan document. So the important planning themes are a big deliverable out of Phase 2. Next slide. So one of the questions that we're grappling with, and again, I'll give a little bit of introduction, but as was mentioned, Representative RCLCO will be on us for further discussion later, but they've been doing a lot of great research in terms of the whole COVID-19 environment and what's going on and things. And their takeaway is that the fact that we're forward-thinking out 20 years for the general plan, that the things that are going on right now tend to be things that are going to impact the rate of growth or the location of growth and things, that they tend to think by the time we get to year 20, which is what the policies and things are being written for, that as a society, that people are going to trend to revert back to the norm. And so because of that, you see, and this is graphs from them, but these are also graphs that are coming out from economists all over the country, even the ones who are being the most conservative are thinking by 2023, which is that extended year, we start to see what's going on in other places and more optimistic. One of the points to be made here, which I think is important, is we're already thinking about this already. And so the way the contracts and things are structured is while data and information is being collected now, we also have reserve in their budget to do sort of almost a post-mortem kind of thing where you're looking backwards a little bit. And so as we're writing the document, which wouldn't occur until probably mid-2021, the RCLCO folks would be potentially updating some of their market information and things, looking at disruptions or preferences and trends that have been going on even since some of the data was collected in 2020. So we're already kind of programmed out to have an elongated view of some of the data that we have here because we're recognizing what's going on with COVID-19. Next slide. And one of the other reasons why I still feel confident about moving forward, even as things are kind of changing a little bit, is we've also got a component for your general plan update which has not been included before, which is called scenario planning. And what we mean by this is instead of just assuming the future that you're on, the path of the track you're on right now is the only one that you can accept, scenario planning by definition requires us to look at multiple futures for the county. And so as we do that, we can look at different influences and things that go there. And also, scenario planning is another one of those tools for the process that's going to be with us for a long majority of the planning process. And so you see, we're thinking about it already with the background research that we're doing. We're going to be building with DPZ staff because DPZ staff will actually be running this model, which allows us to transfer the capacity to run it and the tools into the future so that independent of a consultant, you can continue to do scenario planning within the county. We'll be looking at the trend scenario first, and then alternative growth scenarios, which I'll go over in just a minute. And then eventually, it gets embedded back into the general plan, the way it's written, some of the performance measures and things. So we're continually looking for that kind of hand-in-glove relationship between this idea of scenario planning and writing the general plan. And so for each scenario that we create, and we don't come in with predefined scenarios, the planning process and those important themes from Phase 2 will help define these. But for each scenario we create, we'll have a theme or themes that we want to look at. For each of those themes, we'll start to write a story around it about like what is it we're trying to achieve, or what is it we're trying to be sensitive to. We will have a map that actually maps out different features, whether it's land uses or infrastructure or conservation measures and those kind of things. And then we'll do our analysis on that. And once we do our analysis, we'll be able to get what are called performance measures, which is basically just feedback from the model, and then we'll be able to report that out. And we continue, next slide, we continue to just repeat that for as many alternative growth scenarios as we want to look at. And so you see on the next slide is one example where this is the relationships of different things, talking at the highest level and in general, that we can be looking at. So we might be looking at different land use, the different character and patterns you can do in the county. So it's a land use kind of theme. We can look at different infrastructure and how it's supported or provided. There's another theme, available funding, that's a, you know, sometimes we have to look at limited resources and what does that mean for our future. Policy considerations as well can be baked into this, as well as the market changes. So this is one of those instances where instead of having to do the study and the data analysis period and assuming that that's always going to happen, we can actually move in different scenarios that actually look at all these things in different combinations. And so you see from the slide we're on now, there's some relationship between those. And as you go to the next slide, all we have to do is rearrange those relationships and we can have another scenario. And if you go to the next slide, you end up with yet a third relationship between these five themes and you get a third scenario. And so we're really happy or confident that with the scenario planning component of the general plan as well, I think it's going to help us not have to be so sensitive or tense that we got the data right right now, because as the data's emerging and changing, we could be doing this scenario planning to kind of see what the push and pull relationships are for the county. Next slide, please. Planning Phase 4, it's called the growth framework. And this is where all the engagement and all of the scenario planning and things that are coming out that we're hoping could be done in early 2021 start to get to form around kind of the meat on the bones. And the meat on the bones in this case is all the things that we need to think about for the county to move forward. So the vision, the guiding principles or recommendations, the policies, the maps, all of that kind of stuff starts to form in Phase 4. And then also in Phase 4, we have what's called the Newtown Framework. And that's one opportunity that we're going to dive into a little more detail and be more granular, looking around the area of Columbia. We're excluding downtown because that plan is already there and solid, but we're looking at all the rest of the area to try to determine how does this planning process affect those areas? And actually designing where you see on the page there, some kind of block and drawings, where we're testing ideas. This is one of those opportunities where maybe we say something like, we all like mixed-use development, just throwing out a statement, but yet everybody on this Zoom call or WebEx event may have a slightly different idea about what mixed-use really means. And so by having this opportunity to kind of do more lot, block, lot and block testing and things, we can feel more confident about our general recommendations, as well as provide some more detailed guidance for some very strategic locations in the county, in the Columbia area. So that will be occurring in 2021. Next slide. Here you see Planning Cycle, or Planning Phase 5, and this is really where we're writing the document. And we've put a lot of time into the schedule so that we can write and rewrite things to make sure that we got it all right. One of the big ideas at this point, though, that we bring up is that we like to have the idea of treating the document as a playbook. And what we mean by that is defining a certain number or level of things that are just core elements for the county that should never ever change. But there are some things where maybe there's an opportunity there, and we want to be prepared for it, but we don't necessarily have to go after that. Or there might be some areas where some of the recommendations have more flexibility in them. And so we want to create that hierarchy of where we have our core beliefs, but we also have some flexibility so that when an economic development opportunity comes up or something of that nature, you're ready for it and your plan is ready for it. So we have this idea about being more of a framework than a blueprint. A blueprint would be where you follow 999 steps to build a clock, and you have a clock at the end of there, but if any of the 999 steps don't pan out the way we thought for 20 years, the clock doesn't work. And so we try to have that adage in terms of writing the plan. Next slide. One of the ideas that did kind of get a lot of great response back when we were talking about how we might want to attack the plan in terms of at this stage in the process, with only having general guidelines, was this idea of looking at four different buckets. So we had areas to preserve, and this is in some places we work, kind of what is the soul of Howard County and what is it that we want to protect? So it's not just natural environments and green infrastructure type elements, but your history and the culture and those kind of things as well are in areas to preserve. Areas to enhance are places that are already doing great, but they may need some additional investment or targeted policies in order to thrive for the next 20 years. And so we look at areas that can be enhanced. Areas to transform might be those areas where maybe it's key redevelopment or is taking advantage of new markets and those kind of things. So we look at areas that might transform. Sometimes these have the biggest impact in terms of changing the community, but there's sometimes also the smallest land area that's on the map because we don't need to do a tremendous amount of change. It's very strategic. And then we have areas to strengthen as well, and those, again, are areas that are doing really well already, but they just need a little bit more strategy, a little more thinking through the issues in order to be prepared for the next 20 years. And so this is kind of how we're approaching, just at this early, early stage, without all the engagement completed and all the data and the analysis and scenario planning, a concept for how to organize the general plan. Next slide. The other part that we think's important to kind of highlight now, and again, we got some good feedback from them, that years and years ago, you would write a general plan, and you'd have very discrete topics. And so you'd have a transportation chapter and a land use chapter and a housing chapter. And what we've been finding time and time again is it's actually, it's not that easy, right? To address some of the most important things that are facing you as a government or the community, you have to look at how all of those things work together for the solution. And so in the last few years, we've been writing plans where we actually organize them around themes, not siloed chapters. And so those themes, I can't tell you today what they're going to be because the planning process has to bear those out. But an example from other locations is things like economic vitality or economic development might have something where how does transportation provide access to those businesses? How do we make sure we have the land uses and things that we need? How do we have a competitive advantage in the area? How do we have housing so that the workers can be close to their jobs? All of those things kind of go into a sound economic development strategy, but if they all lived in their own siloed chapters, it'd be very hard to follow it and execute the plan. And so we think that theme-based chapters, again, yet to be determined, but these theme-based chapters would be really important for the general plan that's been written this time. Next one. Next slide. And one of the things we're probably most excited about is, and I say this again from in the opening, I mentioned we work all over the country, Howard County has made a real meaningful investment and commitment engagement for this planning process, and we're really excited about it. It was one of those where we just kept coming up with ideas and sharing our past experiences, and we just said, yeah, that works, that works, that works, and this is how we're going to have this great strategy when we're done. And so as part of that, we have a public engagement plan that's in the general guidelines. And you see, we actually start really early in the process. So before we even tell you kind of what we're going to do, we want to actually just establish some metrics of why do people want to be engaged? And you see that they want to be asked to participate, so we'll do that. And we want to provide not just one, but multiple and convenient ways to participate. They all need to be safe and convenient, that folks find it very easy to interact with the general plan effort. We want to connect people on something that's very meaningful, and we want to make sure we show them how their involvement actually has direct impact on the planning process. And we think a commitment to these five virtues is really what guides the successful planning process. So we wanted to get them into the general guidelines document. Next slide. So I'd mentioned, we have a tremendous amount of resources in our toolkit and ideas and strategies for how to do the engagement plan here. And we break them up into kind of four general buckets here. You see, having ideas and concepts for how to provide education and provide information back and forth. And so that's one way that we're looking at that. And you see, we've got these sub areas underneath it with online engagement. We actually have budget for responding to public inquiries. So if people have a question or they're questioning a theory or a concept, we have money to be able to respond to that in a meaningful way. We have an education curriculum we're really pushing so that we can trade information back and forth and people are making more informed decisions. That's all under our educate campaign. And we also have our inform campaign, and you see here, this is where we're, inform does not just mean from us out, but mostly from people coming into us so that we can become smarter in writing your plan. And so we have stakeholder interviews that we could be talking about. We have this idea about a community ideas exchange workshop, which is planned or was planned as an in-person event, but almost as important, it was already planned to have an online life after the event for up to two weeks. So we've already been thinking about how we eliminate these events, and so that's a great initiative. On the table is a concept that's been created where you create almost like a meeting in a box, and people can go have a discussion on their own. It does not have to be moderated by anybody from county staff or a consultant team or anything like that, but folks can just go have their own intimate conversations about what they think about Howard County moving forward. We have some ideas about how that can continue even in the COVID-19 environment. There was this idea about a board game that was being created, and I'll go into more detail about that here in a later slide. Then we have our collaboration initiatives as well. And you see here, we have the technical advisory team, which is made up of all the different directors of the departments in the county. We have a planning advisory committee that will be formed, is not yet formed. If for any reason, it's because our understanding is once you form it, it has a clock on it on how long it can exist. And so we wanted to have the guidelines finished so that we could really work on this. We want to make sure it's got all the right individuals and things on there. And what I mean, and as I mentioned, we don't have a very vertical hierarchy here. This is all flat. So the technical team is providing us information about how we're going to implement and other things we need to think about and how we fit into other plans and processes going on. The plan advisory committee, one of their values is that they're with us for the entire planning process. And so they're a continual sounding board that can provide us information back, knowing what happened at the last meeting is an example. So one of their values is that they're with us for a very long time, that they provide us input just like everybody else does. And then you see the strategic advisory groups, and we're really excited about those as well. So those are groups that are going to be formed after planning phase two, which is the port and planning themes. I can't tell you again today what they're all going to be around. I have some hunches based on what we've been hearing about transportation and schools and things like that, but they have not been formed yet. However, once they're formed after phase two, those groups will come together and they'll be charged with helping us look at specific issues or themes. And again, sometimes those themes will bleed over into more of the non-traditional topics that maybe those groups wouldn't have been used to dealing with before. So things like land use and transportation are automatically going to be talked about in one of the advisory groups because of that relationship between demand and supply for a sound transportation system and multi-modal approach. So all three of those groups are providing input and having access to the planning process. At least as the consulting team and the folks we've been talking to, there is no hierarchy between these folks, and all of their input will be considered as we write through the document. So we're really excited about having those kind of ongoing and continued relationships with those folks. And then you see, we have a feedback initiative as well, and that's where we're trying to put stuff out there for reactions and information. And so things like a community growth choices workshop, so I told you we were doing scenario planning well. Instead of us just picking internally the solution or the path forward, we want to put that stuff out there for feedback and consideration. There'd be a draft plan workshop where people can look at where the ideas came from and what emerged, and how they've actually taken written form for comments. And then public hearings and briefings, not just at the end, but all the way through. And so things like we're doing today, we'd want to engage with you very often as the county council, so that you know, A, how things got to where they were, and B, can provide some input along the way so that we can make sure that we really hit the target. Next slide. Now, we did add to the planning board draft version of the guidelines between the workshop and the final version, a spotlight on the COVID-19 and really how we're going to try to deal with some of this stuff. And, you know, the open and honest answer I can tell you is, you know, we're kind of learn as we go in some regards, because this is all new for us. And what we're going to do as a consulting team is lean on all our experience, because you're not the only ones who are doing this. And so we've got a lot of lessons learned, experience from folks who have gone a little before you within this environment, and I'll highlight some of those. But one of the big takeaways here is trying to find ways that we can do things in multiple platforms or venues. And just, you can see in the boxes, they already have kind of a plan in place, but it's more time sensitive. We don't want to change things for the end of 2021 yet, because we have no idea what the end of 2021 will be like in relationship to COVID-19. So we want to have some flexibility and be fluid in this process, taking advantage of the opportunities as they present themselves. Next slide. Now, the one thing I do want to mention here, though, and I've had the kind of luxury of being able to tune into some of your other meetings as well, if I'm just trying to get my feet under any meeting and get to know the county better. And I just want to be very open and honest. Online and distance engagement is not only Zoom, and it's not only WebEx meetings. You know, I mean, that's a lot of how you have to do your business right now, but from a community engagement platform, there are a lot of different opportunities out there to do engagement. And so while I, you know, a Zoom or a WebEx meeting is, would probably happen in some form or fashion, we're not relying on that as the only way that we do engagement. And so if you go to the next slide, you can start to see, these are some of the kind of concepts and ideas that are always swirling in our heads as we're trying to think about, you know, what is it that's going to be effective community engagement? So first and foremost, we want equal access to all the information. So we want to try to find as many ways as we can to get information out there, and so everyone has equal access to it. And that goes hand in hand with project transparency. And so we want to find ways and opportunities that we're putting out there, project updates, or getting access to the DPZ or consultant team staff. And the only way we want to do that is actually do some surveying and say, you know, we may not have all the answers, we may not know exactly how the community here wants to be engaged, so let's get some input. Let's try to figure out, you know, what is the best venue to do something? What is the best technology to use? What are the best times a day to do this kind of stuff? We want input so we can build a more confident strategy. Once we start with the online being adopted, hopefully in July, it will be a contact type strategy. So it's not just reaching out from time to time, we want to find a way that we can be consistent and have a regular cadence of information coming in and coming back to us. As part of that, we have explored the idea of having sort of an engagement dashboard internal to the project team. And this might be looking at things that are characteristic of Howard County, so maybe looking at race and ethnicity, income, where people live, families, single profession group, and just kind of look at how the county is sort of represented by different groups, and then try to have our engagement match those relationships between those groups. And so we really want to challenge ourselves to be doing some tracking and try to get some information to make sure we're reaching all the folks, especially underrepresented folks, for more traditional planning process. And that might mean it's working parents or things like that that also need to be engaged as well. And so underrepresented is a very broad term for us. We also want to have the concept out there of dynamic thinking, and so this gives us kind of the right to kind of change things as we go in order to be more opportunistic and more responsive to what's going on month to month or even week to week, based on what's happening with COVID-19 or anything else going on. So we want to be very dynamic. And again, these feedback loops, I think sometimes we don't just ask if we're doing a good enough job or not, there's a long planning process, if it's all the way out to the end of 2021. I think we need to ask folks, maybe in those same surveys, are we being effective? Is there something we can do differently? Really being very humble in our engagement process, we can try to make sure we're hitting the mark. Next slide. And as I'd mentioned, we were already thinking about kind of a four-pronged approach. And so it's more about fine tuning than it is just completely throwing out, even when we were thinking about before the COVID-19 sort of really hit. Still think, you know, between now and the end of 2021, there might be an opportunity to still do in-person engagement. Obviously, we'll have to either be social distance or follow other norms or rules that are in place at the time. But we do think that there are opportunities, looking all the way out that far to the end of 2021, that in-person is very real and still possible. We've always had an online component, and we may need to lean on it a little bit more in the beginning or in the current and the now, just because of the situation we're in, but we've always had an online engagement strategy in present. Telephone may also work, maybe we do stakeholder interviews by telephone or those kind of things, but we have a process to do that. And then things like our surveys and stuff, we understand where, I thought this was interesting, I think it was 93% of folks in the county have access to broadband internet, but there's still 7% who don't. And so how do we do things like mail-in surveys and stuff like that, and we're to try to round out our dashboard that we're tracking? So we've already had kind of a four-tiered approach for the 20-month, 24-month process. We might just need to emphasize things differently from here or there because of the current situation. Next slide. And so what I wanted to do is just provide you a few examples from either other projects we're working on or projects we know about, because, you know, again, in the consultant world, we're all sharing ideas that's actually been really neat in terms of how to do engagement effectively. And so you see here, this is an example of a website from a company called Bang the Table, who is actually the provider and our partner for the website we're preparing for the HOCO by Design plan. And what they did here in Unvita, Colorado, was they were driving around noticing all the chalk art and how everybody was really getting into this and trying to give messages of hope and things. And so they said, well, let's take that online and kind of plug into that. And so they created an online platform to try to get this engagement going and things. And they would put in surveys, like the next slide, where you see, why won't you be my neighbor? And it talks about how people can get out in a socially distanced way, how you can interact, what is it about our neighborhoods we really like? What are the challenges? Maybe if you want, if you like to move into another part of the county, an example here, and you can't, you know, what is it that's keeping you from moving? Those kind of things. But it's a really engaging platform, and it's taking sort of advantage of people's mindset towards being one community again, and helping each other out and interacting and things. And so that's the one from Unvita. Next slide. You do see, this is a screen capture from a project that we're actually involved with now called the Northeast Area Study in the Triangle in Raleigh, North Carolina. And as part of that, we did do, we do do Zoom meetings, but it's for the steering, the project advisory committees or the strategic advisory groups, where it's a little bit of a smaller setting, which allows us, especially because it's a group that's meeting regularly and routinely, it allows us to interact with each other more. And you can see, we do things like polling questions that we ask, and you can see in the chat message, we're actually getting feedback from folks as we're going through some of that polling. We're still having open discussions, but what's really nice about this is we're actually able to capture this other information as well, the more quantitative stuff that goes into the scenario planning and policy writing and all that kind of good stuff. So we still do have Zoom meetings, but we've been using them more for the smaller group sessions that we do. Next slide. I told you, I kind of paused on the board game because I said I was going to come back to it. So here, this is in the city of Charlotte and their comprehensive plan, and it started long before the COVID-19 really happened, but it's still going on as well. And as part of that, they did a board game, and you can see there that they had 840 participants play the board game in person, but they had 990 people who played it online. We were already going to have an online version for the HOCO by Design project, and the board game now, again, is an example of kind of how we do the pivot, we've changed the board game into a card game. And one of the reasons we fused into a card game is because we can make the testing purposes just go to the limit. And so now with a per-unit cost that we can print them, create them, provide them, distribute them, and we don't need to ask for them back. And so it's a way that if you want to bring it into your household, you want to play it with your family and the like, you can still do that in that kind of tactile, hand touching way, but we don't need it back, we don't need to worry about sterilization or anything of that nature. And so we still do have a game component, even that's envisioned for this plan, but it's now going to be a card game, so that we can adapt to the social distancing and the sterilization and things that are going on.
Hey, Matt? Matt? Can you hear me? Matt?
Yes.
Oh. So I think the council has a, there's kind of a limited amount of time, so I was thinking, maybe just in the interest of time, we could hold off on some of the rest of the slides and then, you know, if it's relevant during the Q and A, we could bring them up. Does that work?
Sure. I'm open to anything.
Okay. I think we hit the high points. I just want to make sure they have enough time for their questions.
Of course.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
So I think there are a number of questions, and I will just get started. I'd like you to go back, Matt, to the discussion about the effect of COVID on general plans right now and how you view what could happen as a result of COVID in the future, looking toward the future. I think that you had a number of slides that showed that there were different frameworks, planning for an uncertain, scenario planning for an uncertain future. Some of it showed land use and character, then supporting infrastructure. What were the major considerations? I mean, I see you have these four elements, or five elements, I guess it was. Four elements, one, two, three, four, five elements. But I'm wondering, what were the primary aspects of those five elements that you looked at in coming up with these different scenarios? What could happen? I mean, land use and character, I'm sort of thinking, isn't going to change dramatically because of COVID, but I don't know. I don't know what, why there, it would be listed sort of up in one place in the middle and another and down at the bottom of another. And supporting infrastructure, I assume that that's money, you know, as to whether or not the infrastructure. But I don't want to put words in your mouth, I'd like you to explain to me sort of your, the thought process that went into coming up with these different scenarios.
Sure, of course. First thing just to mention is that these scenarios are just more for diagram purposes. Again, the scenarios themselves will be formed sort of in the fall to winter of this year, specific for the general plan update. But this shows kind of, sometimes the way I've described this in the past is, you know, if you're making a recipe, these are the five ingredients. And, you know, if you're competent enough as the chef, you might mix and match ingredients to try to get the most, the strongest position you can be in. And so from a land use and character standpoint, and we're, you know, we're talking about options out there, and I'm just talking about current, kind of current events and discussion, land use and character, we might look at one where everyone says, look, just keep land use and character, we might look at one where everyone says, look, just keep doing what you're doing. As humans, we like to interact with each other and things, and so we continue to do activity centers. Another one might be, as you start to match these things, so let's say the market change, you know, says we stay with e-commerce, we've already heard about some brick-and-mortar stores going away. How do we reinvent some of those areas that are in Howard County today and, you know, maybe some of those businesses aren't there in 20 years? And so how do we look at land use and the relationship to market and things of that nature? And so we got the flexibility to look at them from many different angles. And the supporting infrastructure, that's kind of looking at things like, what if we, I'll use transportation, what if we widened all the roads in order to get rid of congestion? What does that do? Like, how much does it cost? What does it do? Does it actually solve the problem or just buy you time and the problems?
I'm sorry, Matt. Matt, what if we do what to all the roads? Oh, widen. I thought you said wine. I'm like, oh, we're going to drink wine on all the roads. Okay. Or wind them around? Okay. These could be interesting ideas. I don't know. Okay.
See, I told you, anything's possible. No, no, no.
Anything is possible. But, okay, we're talking about widening them. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. But a different scenario might mean, what if, what if they really extend meaningful commuter transit from DC or Baltimore in, so less people need to drive to work?
What if they did that? Wouldn't it be wonderful?
It could be a scenario.
It could be a scenario.
You know, or, you know, things like, you know, water and sewer service or school provision, all those things go into supporting infrastructure. And we look to see the relationship of growth, development, and how it impacts infrastructure. The available funding is like, well, what if we had all the money in the world? What would we do? What if we only had half? What if the current funding now, because of lost sales tax revenues and some other things because of COVID, you know, what if we have to flatten our trajectories a little bit of what we think are going to be our future revenues? What if the state decided they were going to kick in money for commuter rail? What if they decided they're going to pull money back for some reason? Available funding is one of the levers we can pull in the scenario planning process. And then policy considerations are, again, things like, and again, I'm just throwing these out, but it might be like, well, what if the tallest building in the county was 15 stories tall? What if it was five stories tall? What if it was 35 stories tall? Those are all policy considerations that are written in your other documents that we could test. And then again, the market changes is where we were mentioning, and this is where I really am excited to work with RC Oco about, okay, you know, is this a forever change? Is it not a forever change? How do we look at it? And are there different scenarios? So they may tell us, you know, your trend line is you're going to have this many people in 20 years, but because it's scenario planning, we can look at an upper and a lower bound, higher or lower than that, to say, what if we don't hit that number? Or what if we exceed that number? What does it mean? So the scenario planning just gives us a lot of flexibility to not have to commit too early, especially in a tongue of uncertainty that we don't have to commit too early, we can have multiple features running side by side.
And did you say that you have Erin Talkington? Is that, Erin is with the organization who's doing the marketing?
Erin, were you able to join us?
She's on.
Oh, okay. Could Erin just?
Hello, can you guys hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you, Erin.
Do you have the video too?
Could you just comment a little on the market changes there? I think that that's really critical to all of this.
Sure. You know, I think that our expectation is, you know, similar to what Matt described, with the short-term, long-term trajectory, in the sense that you may see some things, you know, year by year over the next year or two especially, play out very differently than what people projected. But our expectation is that over the long term, 10 or 20 years, you know, the lifespan of this plan, you know, that the trend line will continue to be consistent with, you know, what the forecasts are now. And, you know, really, our role in this project to start with is to think about what should those forecasts be, right? What are you all using now? And what makes sense based on, you know, things that have changed in the market since you last put those together or since the last round of, you know, COG or MBO or other, you know, growth forecast we put together. So we're going to really take into account the fact that the short term might be different, you know, while, you know, focusing our work on this plan on the question of, okay, over the, over the long term, what do we think happens?
So you haven't started that process yet, but that's, that's what you, that's what your participation will be in this project?
Yes. That's our very first step. So I think as soon as, as Matt says, you know, definitely hit go, we're going to hit go and start working on that.
And what do you think right now, Erin, are the national trends? I know you can't, you haven't dug down into Howard County, but I don't know if you're looking at national market trends right now.
We are. I mean, I think a few of the things to pay attention to are, you know, really what we see is an acceleration of a lot of things that had already started or that we were expecting to start happening over the next several years. And, you know, one of those, obviously, and maybe the biggest impact from a housing perspective is the kind of aging of millennials into the family life stage. You know, in fact, it's easy to forget that a lot of millennials already have kids and already own houses. But, you know, that, yeah, you know, you know, it's easy to think that the bulk of millennials, you know, which are really in that 26 to 31 range right now, you are just still getting there. So you, you know, that wave of younger people you saw, you know, pushing all of the apartment demand, you know, up over the last few years, is moving into the home buying market. And so, you know, I have a few personal examples of friends that I think were thinking about buying over the next couple of years or thinking about moving to the suburbs, even if they're renting over the next couple of years. And basically, I pulled the plug in the last couple of months because they, you know, COVID really accelerated that decision for them. They were like, we need more space. This is what we want, let's do it. You know, so I think that there's some other changes in the housing market like that, that, you know, we expect to move more quickly in the short term because of COVID. I think e-commerce is, I think we all knew it was here to stay. The push for groups and retailers that had done fairly well in person and in store, to think about how they operate on multiple channels, right? They operate online, they operate on a pickup model, and they operate in a store, you know, where you can walk in and pick up your goods, is going to be the norm going forward, right? Everybody's had to figure out an online sales platform, you know, whether that's a shipping platform or a pickup platform over the last couple of months. And, you know, most brands that were doing well before this, were already moving that direction. You'll sometimes hear it called omnichannel retail, which is maybe one of the worst terms in terms of not being actually descriptive of what it is. But our expectation is that that will continue and that will change the way that people are using their retail space. Like, they're going to need more space to sort things and more space to be a little bit of like a midi distribution hub, you know, and less space for people to just wander around and pick up things off the shelves. You know, and that all of that collectively will also continue to push, you know, for more logistics and warehousing and distribution space to fill the e-commerce market. You know, and Baltimore and Howard County in particular are well-positioned, you know, on that front because of the Port of Baltimore and all the rail, you know, transit and other activity that was already in the region. You know, so you see, you know, probably the Amazon warehouse that's been trying to, you know, get approved in Prince George County, you know, there really is a rationale for a lot of those issues to be local here. You know, and I think office is the one that people are most up in the air on. And we aren't going to pretend that we know the answer, but what we have seen is that, you know, similar to public gatherings and the desire for people to be, you know, go back to public events and public spaces, you know, and be with people in small gatherings as they can right now. Your expectation is that there will still be a need for office space. You know, everyone's not going to go 100% virtual in a way that, you know, negates the need for an actual physical place for those people to gather. And so, you know, while the way people use that space might change, you know, there's kind of a counteracting trends of, people are already taking less space per person, you know, like shrinking their office for prints. And so with social distancing, actually, I think a lot of people are thinking about whether they've shrunk too far, right? How are they actually going to have people come back to the office, you know, when everybody is sitting three feet apart? That's going to be counteracted by the work-from-home trend, which would push more people, you know, fewer, sorry, more people to be at home, fewer people to be in the office. And so our best guess is that on balance, you're actually going to end up with office trends that look relatively similar to today. You know, with the main change being that the way, the type of office space that people want and the way that they expect those buildings to be set up, right, that they're going to want, you know, buildings that have modern office space, that have really good technology so that they can have a mix of in-person and, you know, Zoom meetings as needed. You know, they're going to want, you know, spaces to gather, but not necessarily super-public spaces where it's only a lobby and, you know, you really do have to deal with everyone. You know, and we think that there'll be some technology changes where, you know, people may be pushing for healthier buildings or buildings with better filtration and, you know, and other systems for them. So there may be a shift from, you know, whereas you saw older office, you know, built in the 70s and the 80s, becoming obsolete, where there were fewer tenants that wanted to take it at any, at any rent point. You know, I think we will see that accelerate, you know, but, you know, in some ways, people will still need space to replace, you know, what they're in. So it's a little bit of a mixed bag, and I think we're interested to see, you know, how that plays out overall.
And could you also comment?
Those are a few of the bigger picture things.
Erin, could you also comment on recreation? How do you, do you see any trends in recreation?
You know, I think the main change we've seen is that when people are at home and don't have as many options for them, they really want to be outside. You know, the idea that there's, you know, being able to walk somewhere from your house, even if it's not a destination, if it's just a great trail, you know, or, you know, bike somewhere. I think sales at bike stores have been up three or fourfold over the last couple of months, as people have found, you know, decided what, you know, what can I do? What can my kids do right now? Oh, we can go out on a bike ride. And so I think there's a lot of that type of passive recreation that will increase. And, you know, some of the true entertainment venues where you're packing a lot of people into a small space are going to be some of the ones that have the hardest time adapting. But the trend towards more experience-driven activities, you know, whether that's outside or inside, you know, we think isn't going to change. People want that experience with other people, you know, with a live event or with, you know, a one-time event where it's special and not replicable. And it is going to be a big adaptation for the industry to figure out how to deliver that in a way that feels safe and comfortable for people.
Council colleagues. Where are you? There you are. Okay. Ms. Walsh, you had your hand up?
I do. Thank you, Chair Young. I have three questions. I think they'll be fast. The first one pertains to that four categories of public engagement slide. It was in the handout that we got earlier. It's, I think, page 32 and 33, and what we looked at today. I see the Planning Advisory Committee, which right now is proposed to be appointed by the county executive and will consist of community leaders, service providers, industry groups, and the general public. I worry about lists like that because I don't see included there kind of the opposite of industry groups. I assume by industry groups, you mean the development community. And so I wonder what assurance we have that that preservation, that historic, like even just churches or PTAs, like those kinds of organized, obviously engaged citizenry part of our community are also included in committees like the Planning Advisory Committee. And then I'll just ask it, and I think you'll probably answer them both at the same time. I'm not clear where the Strategic Advisory Group, the third of the four groups identified there, how they are selected. If someone speaks to those three things.
I can, I can speak to the PAC selection, since that really originated with DPZ and then ultimately the decision of the county executive. But when we said, when we say industry groups, we mean, you know, environmental, historic, A, development. We kind of include not just the development industry, but just really special interests in general. So what we really looked for was a diversity of subject matters and geographies within the county. We looked to make sure it was diverse in terms of like thought leaders and different industry groups. We wanted to make sure we had representatives from our boards and commissions. So, you know, Planning Board, Environmental Sustainability Board, Culture Preservation Board. We looked for people who had expertise in historic preservation, all the things that you mentioned. And then also just general citizens who tend to be active in planning matters. And we know, are you having a hard time hearing me with my mask? I'm sorry.
No, we can hear you. Yeah, you're fine.
Sorry, no, I can. It's just.
Okay, I'm sorry. And then just, you know, general citizens that are active in planning matters that we work with, that know this county, that, you know, have had experience with past general plans, who work with us. So, you know, we did provide some, you know, recommendations to the executive's office based on who we work with on a regular basis. And then ultimately, the invitations that were sent were up to the executive. As Matt mentioned, we don't have the board fully formed yet because we're still waiting to hear back from a few folks. But it is definitely a diverse group of individuals that are active within the county. Oh, and the other thing is, we wanted to have institutions. So Columbia Association, the hospital, the community college, the school system, Howard County Public Schools, and Johns Hopkins APL, to make sure that those major stakeholders all had a role in it as well. So that, in terms of kind of the composition of the PAC, that's probably it in a nutshell. I don't know if, Matt, you want to speak to like when the Strategic Advisory Committees will come into play once we get into the second phase?
Yeah, no, it's good. Thank you. Yeah, so the Strategic Advisory Groups, you know, as I mentioned, I don't want to come in with preconceived notions, so I don't know, you know, what they'll be and how many they'll even be. I can tell you that from a contractual standpoint, we assumed up to five groups and up to five meetings per group. So there's an allowance, let's call it, of 25 meetings. That may end up being eight groups who meet three times a week or some combination thereof. But we wanted to have those formed, sort of thinking about them going into the fall even of this year, as we're getting these themes that are coming out and they're starting to influence the scenarios. And I think one of the key distinguishing factors for me is the Strategic Advisory Group will include local representation for sure. But on top of that, we may pull in experts in those topics from either state or even national perspective to help us really stretch our minds and think about some of the ways we can really solve or take advantage of opportunities in front of us. So in the Strategic Advisory Groups, they're going to meet just about as many times as the Planning Advisory Committee meets. But where the Planning Advisory Committee has a more generalist view, the Strategic Advisory Groups get to dive into themes more certain and more specific and also have the participation of either state or national experts to help work through that process. But again, when you can have up to five meetings per group, it's not a group that we just kind of casually speak with. They're meaningful parts of this project.
Okay. To the extent that those names are known, I would like them to be shared. I thought this came up at budget and I asked if we had started appointing persons to these advisory groups. And I thought the answer, you know, as recently as May, was no, we hadn't. And it sounds like, again, an invitation sent, there was past tense discussion about who they are. But the reality is, I think I will be proposing to this council that we consider amending this section so that there is some council input here, if the county executive nominates names or if we also have some input in terms of who's on there. Because just going back to the same people who have been involved with these land uses exclusively to prepare for the next X years of land use in this county. We don't see a lot of younger people participating in these things. And I would bet I could name without seeing the list who's on it right now. I think we need new names, we need new perspectives, and we need more openness in how this body is selected and appointed. All of it at that, I guess related to that is, I see in the tenants that you'll be looking at, or what I don't see there, is discussion of sustainability or resilience or concepts of, you know, what is so front and center in everyone's mind right now is structural racism, is redlining, is this approach, is this process going to take into account what has happened, what is now institutionalized over X decades of land use? The status quo doesn't work here, right? That's exactly what we don't want to do. That this is how we did it, this is how it's done, this has worked out, those are no longer good explanations for why we do things. And so I think that's tied into my first question, which is, who are we inviting to make these decisions? Because I think the reality is, this emerges from, you know, 80-page document described process is, it's going to be baked in. And, you know, board games and online surveys aside, it's going to be baked in. And those committees, I would- And, and those committees, I would guess, because of so many of these processes that have come before it, are going to have a disproportionate impact on the outcome. And, uh, and so I want to make sure that we're, we're including all of those. Um, the last point I wanted to make was, and, you know, I, I've heard different things. I, I'm not sure why we want to charge ahead with this right now.
I, um, I disagree that now is a good time to engage in any process that purports to actively engage the public. Anyone with small children, anyone with technical difficulties, it is not, this is not, I don't think, the time to pretend like we are having a robust public participation about anything.
And, uh, I think that's borne out by the number of emails that we received about the budget, the emails that we received about Charter Committee, the emails that we received about the legislation. I know, at least in D1, it seems very quiet, oddly so, in, in a time that we are dealing with so many different things. So, uh, you know, I, I would like to hear why exactly right now? What is the consequence if we push it off three months or, or whatever? Why, why are we charging ahead right now with something that, that purports to rely quite heavily on an engaged, a broadly engaged, um, citizenry?
Um, I guess I can start, Matt. Feel free to chime in. So I, I, you know, first, we, you know, we, we asked ourselves that, that very question, you know, do we, do we continue with this effort or do we hold off? We spent a lot of time talking to our consultants and doing research. And, um, one thing we looked at is that many jurisdictions are moving forward that are, that are in a similar boat as us, um, that we didn't feel that we needed to completely stop the project. Um, we are scheduled for an update, and we do need to update our general plan. Um, delaying it means not only we delay that indefinitely because we really don't know, I mean, what, what, when is this going to end? Nobody has the answer to that. You know, we might not be able to meet in large groups and do, uh, an, a, a large community event for a year. I mean, we really have no idea. So, to hold off something indefinitely, um, which then just delays the general plan update, it then also delays all of the regulatory updates that are supposed to follow the general plan. I mean, we just looked at that as, as something that's really going to stall the county out, um, when there are a number of jurisdictions, not only locally, such as Anna Rundle, Prince George, Montgomery, they're all moving forward with their general plans as well as nationally. And that's where some of the slides that, that Matt had showed was, we're looking at what others are doing, and there's a lot of, there are a lot of techniques out there. We find that, you know, the way to reach those hard-to-reach people that don't normally participate is through digital. Um, you know, that's how we, the board game, which now we're looking at doing a card game and some of the, on the, the meeting in the box, and some of the other, like, you know, a digital board game, that's how we were hoping to really reach those people that don't typically engage in planning activities and to have that broader representation participate in the process. So we really felt like we could accomplish that goal, which was our big goal, um, by proceeding now. And it allows us to put more time and energy into that outreach, um, because that will be, obviously will be the focus of our public engagement. So Matt, I don't know if you wanted to add anything, or Mary, that I might have missed?
Um, yeah, just quickly, so we were just discussing what are some of the trends as a result of COVID-19, and they're things like looking at how do we redesign our, our public spaces so that we might still be able to use them in the future, but ensure that people can be physically distant. We may need to look at, you know, any place where, uh, individuals may gather, but they might have to be redesigned. And I think a lot of those redesign efforts would come out of a regulations, um, comprehensive assessment, reevaluation, or redoing those regulations. But again, we have to kind of do the general plan update first. So I guess I just think that now there are a lot of new issues that we do need to start to look at as a result of COVID, so I don't know if it makes sense to try to do that now. Um, and, you know, work really hard through what we do recognize could be a challenge engaging people virtually. Um, but I think that we can probably still engage people virtually, so.
The other thing, real quick, that we are trying to show is that with the public engagement plan and the four different, um, categories of engagement, I mean, they continue through the life cycle of the plan, and it's a twenty-four-month plan. So, you know, because we can't necessarily engage with people one-on-one right now, that doesn't mean that a year from now, you know, where, when we start doing some of the scenario planning, that we can't, you know, start to have, you know, some, some in-person engagement. So we think that we can be flexible and kind of evolve our public engagement to the situation as, you know, as the, the COVID-19 pandemic kind of evolves as well.
All right, Terrence. Okay. All right. We're, yeah. We can't see you, Amy. So we were just, I don't know.
Oh, you couldn't see me?
We can't see you. And this is actually kind of a follow-up to, I guess, Liz in a way, because this is the problem with doing this in the COVID environment. Trying to just interact all the time virtually like this is very difficult. And it's clear that, there you go. All right, Terrence, thank you for getting Amy. And it, okay.
I was going to talk a while ago. I would have moved.
All right. I was wondering, I was wondering why Mary had on her mask. And I was wondering why you sounded as if you were in the same room, but we couldn't tell that you were in the same room. But I, I mean, this is-
The camera is supposed to move, and I don't know.
It didn't.
It was working this morning.
Yeah, no, it wasn't. But this is, I mean, this is the kind of thing that I think is really important that, that Ms. Walsh was asking about, which is, you know, not, not being able to interact with people, not being able to actually see them, not being able to have a natural conversation with them, to have that back and forth, to, uh, you know, I'm looking, once again, which we've had this discussion many times as a zoning board, I'm looking at a bunch of initials, I'm not looking at any faces on a screen. I mean, this is, it's just, it's very, very hard. And, and I, I think I'm getting back to Ms. Walsh's question, why not wait six months before we start the public engagement process? What, what is that going to hurt? We were two years late, apparently, in doing our last, um, general plan, because every time I look at this, it says the last general plan was 2012, which means that our new general plan is not really, really due until 2022, which means that we have extra time right now. And if ever there was a time to pause and allow us to really get, to, to bring back that public engagement, knowing that there is probably no county, maybe in the entire world, that is more publicly engaged on land use issues than Howard County, that this would be, this would be a recognition of, of how much people do want to actually participate in this process in person and not just virtually. I mean, that's, I, I guess it's just sort of underlining what, uh, Council Member Walsh just said, to, and, and trying again to make this case that a six-month pause in this, and there, it looks like there's a lot of other things we could continue to do in moving the plan ahead without getting the public engagement part started that would help us build more of this foundation that we're looking for when we get out there. Um, so, and six months, I think, will give us a better idea of where we're going to be. I mean, we've only, seems like, I know it does seem like forever, but it's actually been ninety-nine days, because somebody mentioned that the other day. Um, so I think in another six months, we might have a better feel for whether we should just forge ahead with public engagement, because at that point, we really won't know where things are going to be. Or do we just, you know, say that, oh, well, it looks like in another month or two, this will be the perfect time to start? That's my view. Anyway, okay. Mr. Youngman, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I do.
He looks, he looked like he, he did, since he's sitting right next to me today. Oh, he's got a lot of notes, too. He's scribbling away.
That's for everything, though. Um, so I'm not sure who this question's for, but, um, so the PAC is supposed to be sort of the general citizens, and the SAC is more the, you know, the environmentalists, the traffic people, the, the more sort of what we'd call industry experts. Do I have that right?
Um, I, I would, I would say that the PAC is, is, is all, is industry experts, environmentalists, transportation folks, citizens, um, but maybe, um, you know, one to multiple representatives from each industry, as, as opposed to the, the Strategic Advisory Committee, which, let's just say that's an environmentally focused committee. That's going to be a committee of all environmental experts on the committee.
So you'll have, you'll have multiple different strategic small groups, almost little breakout groups?
Yes. They're more like, yes, subcommittees almost on specific subject areas that need special attention.
Who are the economists involved in this now? And who will they be? And how many where they'll be? And where will they be coming from? Sorry for all these questions.
That's, uh, Ms. Talkington, who just presented on the market and economic, uh, projections. Uh, so she works for RCL Co. And I mean, I'll, I'll turn it over to Ms. Talkington if she wants to talk about her firm.
Perfect. Right. We're, we're a real estate advisory and marketed land use, you know, firm based in, based in DC, you know, although we work across the country. We've been in business for fifty years, you know, working on, you know, everything from, you know, an individual, you know, site for a developer or community to, you know, large-scale long-term growth plans for, for regions. And, um, you know, we're, we're also working on the comprehensive housing plan with the Housing and Community Development Department. And so, you know, we're, uh, you know, fairly invested in, you know, what's happening in the county right now, and, uh, you know, we'll, we'll really be putting our best foot forward and, and working with you all, you know, on the general plan as well.
And then outside of your firm, do we have any other economists that get involved in this?
Uh, wasn't there somebody on the agricultural side that might have been involved?
Yeah, so, um, we do have, Phil Gottwals is our agricultural, um, expert for the, for the plan, and he'll be looking at ag economics in, in terms of that very pointed view. But RCL Co. is, is on the broad thinker and, and most of our resources. But yes, we do have a, an expert on ag economy as well.
Well, um, and I, and I am very happy to hear that there's going to be an ag economist expert, but, um, I'm even bigger picture than that. You know, I mean, I can just envision the, the public's sort of, um, wish list on, on, on the next thirty or forty years of land use in this county. And I, 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 I'm concerned that it's going to be something that is not remotely fiscally or economically sustainable. Um, and I need, I, I need to make sure that what we can do long-term economically is, has a, has a very loud voice on this, in this process, as I know that all of the public sort of thought leaders will have a very, very loud voice as this will become more and more political the further along we get.
Mm-hmm.
So, um-
Yeah, so you'll, you'll hear me say a couple of times, this visioning is fantastic, but information is dangerous. And so we do try to ground ourselves quite a bit, and you bring up one example, and there will be many more and other topics as well, that we do need to be very good at, at providing the data. That is why we have literally dedicated funding sources for creating information as well as creating educational components. So we at least acknowledge we have, we have that need. Um, we just didn't want to commit to exactly how it's spent yet, because we don't know what the, what the critical points are.
Okay, great. And I guess-
Mr. Youngman, I, I just wanted to point out that we will be doing the fiscal impact analysis in-house. So we will be, um, our research division will be, will be looking at the impacts to the county's budget, um, uh, on the impacts of different growth scenarios on the county's budget. So each growth scenario will have a fiscal impact analysis associated with it. Um, and then RCL Co. will be peer reviewing our work.
Now, is that, when we talk about fiscal impact, we're, we're going to be looking thirty, forty years out? Expenses, service delivery, um, structural sort of budget spending needs as well as the top-line end? I mean, the, the stuff we've done in-house has a lot of times only been revenue or expense related. So it's, it'll be a full top-to-bottom economic study? Sorry, I know my camera's here, but you're here.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
So if I'm looking at you there, that's why.
Right.
Um, and I, so I think that this also comes back a little bit to what Liz was just saying was, you know the usual suspects that are going to be on all these commissions, and I, that's great, but one, these, the, these groups can't get too big. I heard a long list of everybody from every organization that is going to want to have a seat, and all that sounds really great, but, you know, the more you have, more people you have involved in these, at some point, that critical mass makes them not very effective. And I'd like a better sense of who's on these committees and why, what do they bring to the table other than that they represent one particular group that doesn't want to get left out? Um, because this is, we, I feel like we rushed through the last general plan in, the last two general plans have been sort of updates of the previous general plan, and we have an opportunity this time to actually do a new general plan, not to just update the one we have. And, um, I think we end up with an update of what we have if it's all the same people. So, um, that's all I had on this. So thank you.
Okay. Other council comments, questions? Councilmember Rigby, did you have anything you wanted to ask or any comments? This is a work session, so.
Um, well, I was, I did want to do a time check, because I didn't know how much time we have left for this item compared to the other items. Um, because a lot of my questions have been answered, but I don't want to take us down a rabbit hole if, um, if it's going to infringe on the other, I, our ability to get to the other items.
Well, we do, yeah. We're, I think we're at the point now where we probably need to wrap up, but if you had a question or two, I want to make sure you had that opportunity.
Thank you. Um, most of you guys got through, um, the ones I had written down, and I can follow up with Ms. Gowen after. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. Dr. Jones, did you have anything that you wanted to, um, that you wanted to ask?
No, uh, some of, a couple of my questions have already been answered, and others, um, I, um, I have, um, um, faith in the expertise of the individuals that have spoken. Um, I can always email someone offline not to take up too much time here. Thank you.
Okay. I have one last question. Um, uh, I guess it's, I don't know if it's to you, Director Gowen, or if it's to the, our experts over there, but I, I was surprised to see that there was going to be a particular focus on Newtown, with a particular focus in Newtown on village center redevelopment, because I thought that that was already addressed, and if there's going to be a particular focus on Newtown, it seems like there are a lot of issues. There's a lot of issues that, that are, that we're dealing with that are percolating up in Newtown. And other than the fact that there's a village center redevelopment in front of us right now on the zoning board, so I don't want to get into the particulars of that, I don't quite understand why that would be the choice of things to focus on, given all the other issues that Newtown is facing right now. And for people who are just watching this and aren't familiar with our terminology, Newtown is basically Columbia.
So I'll try to be quick in the interest of you needing to get to other items. Um, the focus on Newtown was a result of the development regulation assessment. Um, when, when the, um, when the, the regulation assessment, when we were going through all the in, public input, um, what we heard from many folks in Columbia was, um, before the county thinks about changing our zoning in any way, we really need to have a plan for Columbia. And, you know, we were at meetings, we asked folks, you know, what makes Columbia unique and special? And next to the open space, um, pretty much everyone had a different description of that. So this effort is really our effort to try to develop a special focused framework for Newtown that can inform and guide the ultimate, um, update of the development regulations and to help to really get people in a room- Um, and to help to really get people in a room and figure out collectively, what is it that makes Columbia unique? What is the design and the character of Columbia that people want to see perpetuated for the next 40 years? What's the future of Columbia?
So it's not just about the village center redevelopment?
No, it's not about the village centers.
Okay, that's what it says in the slide.
I mean, that's one piece of it, but I wouldn't say there's any, you know, focus on village centers. I would say the focus is on Newtown once it's been village centers.
Beautiful. Wonderful. Okay. I, I was concerned when I saw that sentence. All right. Okay. So, um, and I guess that we should probably also talk about the fact that, I imagine that there are some council members who would like to be involved in some of these groups. Um, I know if there's going to be a Newtown focus, I represent five of the villages in Columbia. And I certainly would like to be, um, a participant or at least be able to listen to what people have to say when they're talking about Columbia and the direction they would like to see Columbia go in. I imagine that there are other, um, council members too who would, if not participate, at least like to, um, join the group and, and be there so that they can hear what their constituents have to say or hear what the residents have to say of Howard County. Um, since we're not on anybody's list here, Director Gallin, none of the council members are on any of these lists. I think it would be nice if, you know, we could at least be invited to the meetings. And, um, you know, if, as I said, if not participate, at least hear what people have to say firsthand.
Yeah, we would love for you to be as involved as you, you know, you can possibly be. So every step of the way, we intend to be updating the council, inviting you to meetings. Help, we're, we're asking you to help us get the word out about the meetings and to your constituents as well. So yes, please, please be involved.
Will do. Okay. Thank you. We're moving on. Um, we, we appreciate everybody's participation. Um, we, we know that as always, um, it, it can be trying to have to do this virtually. But we do, um, we're, we're glad that everybody is making this effort. And so I want to thank Amy and Mary, Erin and Matt for taking part in this, uh, conversation for the last hour and a half. See you guys.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
And next up is going to be Council Bill 13.